Call to order the City Council meeting for Monday, May 6, 2024. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro call, Amanda.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Here.
Scott Steckmesser.
Here.
Darla Leclair.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Bill Leclair.
Here.
Doug Brandt.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
Shannon Derby is absent and excused, and Adam is also absent.
Thank you for that. We haven't, I haven't heard from Adam, so I'm assuming he will not be joining us remotely tonight. So we'll skip down to number five, input from the public. Anyone that wants to address the council, please stand up and head over to the podium on your left. State your name and address for the record, and you may speak what you want to say. Anyone for input from the public? See, nothing. We'll move on to number six, Council Communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything? Go ahead, Bonnie.
Well, we all got that letter about the Airbnbs. And my understanding is this time it had police action involved. I would, I actually want to bring up, I would like to see this discussed at a work session. And in order to make sure that this can happen, in case nobody likes this idea, somebody has to second it. And we can, we can discuss it. In other words, in order to have this discussed, there are two council people that have to agree, unless the president wants it.
And I'll agree with you, Bonnie, so.
You will? Okay.
Yeah, we can add that to a future.
Or maybe.
We can add that to a future work session to talk about it. Is there something specific you want to talk about for Airbnbs or just in general?
First of all, I think we should check what rules we have for them. And maybe if you want to compare them to other cities. But certain things that, I mean, like if you're going to be loud or parking, make parking difficult so that someone cannot get into their driveway, that's even an offense just in general, isn't it? And I know people have complained about Airbnbs before. This isn't the only person, so.
Yeah, we all, I think, got that same email today, and I forwarded it on to them. Like I said, I responded back to everyone, so yeah, that's something we can bring up at a future work session. Yep, perfect. Anyone else? Council Communications. Okay, moving on to number seven, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything? Yes, Bill.
Public Works Committee had a lot of things to talk about. One of the things, put it on. Street to be. Harbor Street to Seventeenth, so it's going to be, there's a. By the. Coast Guard, and we want to run a new, bigger water main. Harbor Street's. And they're all on, area on. That's going to be in the, for next year, I guess, so, and we voted on it and we agreed that that would be the one that we'd want. Also, we talked about a fleet management, which is on the agenda for this evening. And we sent it up to councils. And we agreed with the Faster Software, which is what we use for our fleet management here in Two Rivers. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mark.
I attended my first committee on aging. Thanks, Bill. And I was amazed at the amount of issues that they talk about and how important that is to our community and all the things that they do. But the thing I want to share with the public is that there is a second annual Back to School Carnival, which is basically an attempt to gather school supplies to offer to students who have difficulty getting their old school supplies. It's a donation of new supplies. It starts August 2nd, or ends August 2nd and starts June 1st. So between now and August 2nd, you could donate any school supplies and drop it off at the senior center, and our community would appreciate it. Thank you.
Mark, anyone else? Darla?
For Main Street, you guys have all seen that the mural has started. It's going to take a couple of weeks, and we kind of got a slow start because of the weather. It was just too damp, and we didn't know if it was going to rain, rain or not. So anyway, it is, it is underway. And you might have noticed, but two Main Street businesses have moved or are making moves. One is Meridian Wellness, which has now moved to Lincoln Avenue into the Old Bank. And the other one is The Quilt Shop, and that is moving to 1400 Washington Street. So those, I think those are really good moves for them because the air or the locations just suit them much better for their, for their businesses. And then also new businesses that are coming in is Cool City Cycles Bike Shop. And that's going to be over at 1810 Washington Street, and they will do painting, cleaning, building, stocking. Although that's what they're, that's what they're doing to get the business up. Her shop does bike sales and repairs. And then also Wildflower Outdoors. The woman who's opening this business, it is at 1705 East Streets where the thrift shop was. It used to be the, I guess Lucky Paws had been in there, across the river. But anyway, she is planning to carry hiking, camping, and kayaking gear and accessories and clothing, as well as beach items. Main Street is looking for volunteers for the car show. And we are also anticipating Yard Bomb 2024. Get in touch with Jason at, over at the Main Street office to, to either volunteer or to apply to be in the Yard Bomb. The other one was EAB. We've had a lot going on. And one of the things that I wanted to update everybody on, well, first of all, tomorrow night is going to be our last presentation of our winter series for this year. And it's going to be on County Recycling Center and Programs. And it's with the Operations Manager, John Reisenbeekler. So that's tomorrow night at 6:00 over at the library. We have rounded out our lineup of speakers for this coming season, which will be season three. Just to give you an idea as to what people can expect, there's going to be a presentation on a natural balance, blending trees, nature, art, and people. Woodland Dunes will talk about birding at home, attracting and caring for native birds. Terrible Husky over at Mantua County Soil and Water Conservation, she's an education coordinator. And she is actually going to come over with one of their engineers and discuss rain gardens, building style and sustainability. And then we also have Titus Selheimer coming in about fishes. He will also have recipes that is included in his talk. And DNR Wildlife of Wisconsin will come in and basically is what would you do keeping wildlife wild? And the last thing is going to be on light pollution and animal confusion. So we really got very diverse in our subjects for this coming year. And hold on a second. Oh, we have designed a logo for Environmental Advisory Board, so we can use it for some, some pages that we want to add on to the website. And what we want to do is we want to create a library there, one for videos and one for links to more information on a myriad of topics. We're going to start interviewing different people this summer for inclusion into the library so people can always access it. And we just, you know, there's a partnership with Vanderbroe Arboretum. And he wants to get more involved with EAB. And then also we're going to talk to Mike Mathis about becoming a bee city, getting our designation. Paddler's Park, we're going to do some riparian planting, and that's something we're going to work with Mike on as well. And then I just talked to the chief, not right before the meeting started. And kind of over on the side towards the back of the fire department grounds, there is an area that they've been using for vegetable gardening. And we'll probably, we'll, we'll plant something for this year. But what we want to do this year is really plan something out for next year and start researching like dwarf plants and just different options that people can use at their homes. Maybe the dwarf plants will fit into your landscaping a little bit better than, you know, the traditional. So that is all I've got.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, on to number eight, Acting City Managers' Report.
Yeah, like you said, Acting City Manager, unfortunately Greg is going to be absent for a little bit on medical leave. He said he'd be happy sharing that with everyone. So for those at home that maybe don't know me, I'm Ben Minert, the Police Chief with Two Rivers PD. So you'll have to deal with me for the next couple of weeks. First off, we have some invited guests. I'd like to invite Pamela Stevens. She's a representative, there's a correction in here, with American Legion 165, and she'd like to speak.
Thank you for having me. I am with the American Legion, and this year, our Memorial Day will be on the 27th. We will be having our regular parade and presentation at the Old Cemetery. We will have staging area changes than what we had from prior years because of the Cool City Brewing Company. We are moving it now behind this building and on Jefferson Street. So staging area will start there. We have a bell ceremony that will start off at 8:30 in the morning on the 27th. That will be all those that had died in various wars up till current to include all the veterans of Two Rivers for the last year. Then the parade will step off at nine o'clock with the presentation at the Old Cemetery at 9:30. We, the American Legion Auxiliary, pass out poppies when we receive donations. That will start on the 22nd of May, going through to Memorial Day. So if you see anybody at one of the locations, please, you know, be generous, make your donation, and you will receive a beautiful poppy. And. Yes, these poppies are made by veterans in veteran homes. And they actually get paid a penny a flower for everyone that they make. But it's, it's not, yes, oh, and we are actually going to pass out this year. Something Different is a booklet on flag advocacy. So if you guys ever have a question on flag advocacy, your city council members now have a book on this. National Poppy Day is Friday, the 24th. And we will start both the American Legion members, the Auxiliary members, and possibly some VFW members will be at Pick and Save, The Pig, Quick Trip, maybe even your bank, but only if you go through the drive-through. And thank you, everybody from City Council, for your generous donations.
Thank you, PJ. As PJ mentioned as well, that was another correction on the, on the agenda, that they're not for purchase, but rather for a donation. On mine, thank you. Number two, for invited guests, I'd like to invite Brian up to announce a newly hired electric meter technician.
Good evening, everyone. I'm pleased tonight to introduce Jeff Kozaczek as our new electric utility meter technician. His primary responsibility is going to be overseeing our electric meter replacement, as well as assisting the other crews in any other day-to-day activities. Jeff brings with him a wealth of knowledge, and is going to be a valuable member to our team at our utility. He's a graduate of Two Rivers High School, as well as Lake Shore Technical College, as well as a resident of Two Rivers. Please welcome Jeff.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
No, just happy to make the announcement that Cassandra Peter has been selected as the new Finance and Administrative Services Director for the city. She will be coming to us as a graduate of University of Wisconsin-Green Bay where she earned her bachelor's in business administration. She is a Two Rivers resident and a graduate of Mishigot High School and she is a certified public accountant as well. She is, has been employed since 2012 at Shady Lane Nursing Care Center as their Director of Finance most recently and as an accounting coordinator previous to that. Cassandra will begin her duties on May 28th and I'm sure shortly thereafter we'll have a introduction just like this tonight. We'll be working, we'll be working, meaning Cassandra and I and my staff will be working together for the, for four weeks prior to my retirement date of June 21st. So in short, I look forward to working with Cassandra and to, to ensure a nice smooth transition into the next Finance Director. So thank you.
Thank you Dave. Next Andrew's going to come up and speak up about our water distribution foreman Dalton Schmidt.
So about a year and a half ago, the water department was hit with quite a few retirements at the same time. In that mix of retirements and the new staff coming onboard, one of the positions that didn't get filled is this high-bred role of distribution foreman and water operator. So I'm excited to announce that we did finally fill that with Dalton Schmidt. This is not an addition to our department, this is just a high-bred role where he will facilitate working, overseeing projects outside as well as taking his rotation in. So we're very excited to see him move forward with it.
In addition, you can see on here, Jeff started March 25th and we also hired Recreation Clerk looking for the fire department for a vacancy due to a retirement coming up. So those applications are due on May 30th. And then I think Mike was going to come up and speak to some needs at Parks and Rec.
Actually have general news on this front. There was two big positions that we were hiring for this season. One of them was our kids camp coordinator that would run day camps basically from 12:30 to 4:30 at Washington Park. So after summer school lets out, then that one we got filled. So that was good news. It was super important for us. The other one that we're kind of getting down to the wire on is an aquatics coordinator. So we know that with the closing of the community swim club, there's going to be a lot of demand for swimming and swim lessons. And so we were going to open up the high school gym for more public swim hours and other things, just to have some fun and get people swimming in the pool there. But we really need somebody to take the point on that because that would be a pretty big addition for us of quantity of time being programming. So we were looking for somebody to take that on. As we get closer and closer to the end of the school year, we have 14 days, school days left, we really need to be setting that schedule with the school district. So if anybody ends up being interested in that, it really should be getting back to me by the end of this week for the aquatics coordinator. Otherwise we've done, we've hired a lot of people. We still probably take some applications on the concession stand. We always need folks for that as well. But otherwise, the aquatics coordinator, tell all your friends. Thank you.
For that. I'm at with several of the next topics he's more of the professional expert on.
We'll assume that I'm an expert on these topics. So Roosevelt Avenue Construction update, the Public Utilities and Public Works Committees have basically heard this already. The sanitary sewer is approximately half done, going from 12th down to about ninth place. Water main is about the same. The contractor shifted back to the 12th Street intersection today to try and finish up some storm sewer work in that vicinity so that then Public Works crews can facilitate repaving a good portion of the 12th Roosevelt Street intersection so cars do not have to travel across the gravel in that vicinity and actually can be on some hard pavement. So that'll last about a week for it to cure out, will take almost two weeks. So hopefully mid this time in two weeks, it should be opened up to total vehicular traffic instead of the construction that's going on out there right now. WPS has some relocation of gas that they want to do some upgrading to. And then Two Rivers Electric and Frontier have additional overhead work that they are doing out there as well. The next topic is our two dump trucks that were ordered May or March of 2023. And I know for myself, I've been asking what the status of them as far as when are we expecting to receive them? The short answer is not in the near future. Because we've been asking so much of the rep, the local dealer got in contact with the actual truck manufacturer, International. We had a sit-down meeting last Thursday morning. I received the answers that I anticipated. There's a backlog of materials shortage, lean manufacturing. We only supply what we can need for the immediate builds, yada, yada, yada. So a lot of traditional, I'll call it stall type mechanism. The short answer, or getting a little longer, is the build slots were intended for February of this year to February of next year, 2025. In our sit-down meeting, it was discovered that the trucks were not actually ordered until September of last year, thus a six-month delay. And that's because International closed their ordering window. So our local vendor could not even place the order in a timely manner. We expressed our displeasure as to why that wasn't communicated to us, but there is a clause in our contract with the local vendor saying we will receive it by December 31st of 2024 and they will try and honor that. Unfortunately, there is no penalty clause in there, so it's a threat, but it doesn't carry a lot of weight to it. So that's the, the short answer. So we've budgeted dollars in the 2023 budget, budgeted dollars for these trucks in 2024 and as such, there is a surplus of funds and we'll address that topic a little later in the agenda. As far as the bids for scattered site lead water service lateral replacement, we did receive bids on Thursday morning. They came in overall favorable. The engineer's estimated cost was a little over $4 million. The apparent low bidder came in at just under that at 3.969 million. So close bid. The second bid was roughly $50,000 above that. Because of some funding concerns, we were hesitant to rush and have this contract awarded. We wanted to make sure that all of our funding was adequate and in order. So there will be a formal recommendation to award at the next city council meeting. But overall bids went well and anticipate construction to begin in July and the apparent low bidder would be Mammoth Construction, the same contractor on Roosevelt. So if there's any questions, I'll take them. If not, I'll go sit down.
And I have a question regarding the dump trucks. If the truck is delivered the December 31st date, or it isn't, is that going to be any problem to service our community streets?
The trucks that we have now are functional. They're just, there's some small issues that we have with them that are constantly reoccurring and ultimately need to be retired out of the fleet. But no, should not affect winter road maintenance at all.
I thank you. I'd be clear to the community. Thank you.
As Darla mentioned earlier, there's a picture of the mural going down next to Seeds and Beans, again funded with grant monies. Another couple photographs here, it's actually quite impressive compared to these photos. These were more in the early stages. But city crews at work preparing to pour a new concrete walkway through Neshota Park. This takes you from Pierce Street over to the beach, widening the path really and really beautifying it is, is the intention there and it's part of the, the master plan for Neshota Park, already with new lighting and a beautiful new playground for the kids. And Two Rivers on the 15th will be having an assembly at noon at the Rogers Street Fishing Village. That's where we honor our fallen officers, Rock and Dodge. So everybody's always invited to, to attend. Prior to that, we always do some assemblies at, at all the schools with some instructional on, on Police Week and also some information of our fallen officers. And Brian Delman's going to come up and talk about some awards that we received.
Second time I get to talk about something good. As you can see in the photos, recently I was able to attend the APPA Engineering and Operations Conference down in New Orleans. Currently, there's over 2,000 public power providers throughout the United States. Some of those topics that were held at the conference were regarding safety, environmental issues and grid modernization. The first one I want to talk about is our RP3 Award, the Reliable Public Power Provider. Two Rivers was one of 91 utilities that were honored to receive this award. This demonstrates the commitment for four key disciplines, safety, reliability, workforce development and system improvements. The second award was the Safety Award of Excellence. Two Rivers was one of 146 utilities that were selected. For this, this was categorized by the number of employee hours and ranked by the highest number of incident free records and overall safety programs and culture. And lastly was the Smart Energy Provider. Two Rivers was one of 66 to earn this award for leading practices in smart energy information, energy efficiency and distributed energy resource programs, environmental and sustainable programs and initiative, and initiative and communication, education and customer experience. As a local utility, we are honored to be recognized on a national level for our efforts.
Back on, I don't know where it cut off. Park West 365 recognized as top public-private partnership for downtown revitalization. Cool City Brewing for best interior renovation over $50,000. And as you can see, we had representatives from, from the city involved in those pictures. As you may notice, our city planner, Elizabeth, is not with us this week. I believe they're all getting back tonight at the airport, but they are off as our representatives for the sister city. So a few pictures there of the beautiful Czech Republic. Upcoming events, we have Environmental Advisory Board, Public Education Series, County Recycling Center and Programs. That's Tuesday, May 7th at 6:00 PM at the Lester Library. Snow Fest Wine and Beer Walk Downtown Two Rivers, May 10th, 5:00 to 8:30 PM. That's on a Friday. And Wisconsin Society for Birding Annual Convention begins at 3:00 PM on Friday, the 17th. However, they do have an early bird special events on Thursday, the day prior. You can do so by calling Woodland Dunes. Again, that event runs with them from May 16th to May 19th, 2024. And then Woodland Dunes is also celebrating their 50th anniversary, May 17th at 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Woodland Dunes Nature Center and Preserve. Optimist Juniors and the Optimist Club have a spring collection for electronics and shredding. That's Saturday, May 18th. And there's plenty of information on what you can, what will be accepted and what won't be accepted and some nominal fees for some items. And then Washington Park, yet another playground getting an upgrade, which looks fantastic. So that will begin sometime in May. And then commemorating the heroes, Wednesday, May 22nd, 9:30. The event's highlighted by the installation of utility pole banners in Central Park East, each bearing the name of fallen Two Rivers residents. All community members and veterans are invited to show their support and gratitude for the fallen heroes and their families. And a thank you to our dedicated water crew. It is Drinking Water Week. We probably should have put this first because we all need water to survive. I always give Andrew some fun about that and he will, he will be talking about a proclamation later on. And then Two Rivers Night at the Ballpark. Correct me if I get this wrong. You want to talk about it? Perfect. Mike will come up and explain.
So Joe Metzen, working hard on our behalf for the city, helped set this up with the Timber Rattlers. So on July 13th, it's going to be Two Rivers Night at the Ballpark for the Timber Rattlers baseball game. So we will get special coverage, special advertising for Explore Two Rivers and the city at the baseball game. We're also doing a fundraiser. So there's a link and we're going to publish it all over social media and our newsletters very soon. Then if you go through the link and you sign up to go to that baseball game, $3 of that ticket sale will come back, the Two Rivers Youth Sports Fund. So we'll be able to put that into youth sports activities for the Parks and Recreation Department. Get a couple of other perks about it as well. If you attend the game as a part of our group, then you can join us on the field for a parade around the warning track. Greg is out and so that means I get to throw out the first pitch. So you could see me hopefully make it across home plate. Also, our youth baseball and softball attend, they will get to be on the field for a high funnel with the players as well. So, and it's also Star Wars Night and fireworks after the game. So yeah, if you're looking for something fun, a night out at the ballpark, us out. If not, we're going to also be publishing QR code and a link. If you'd like to make a donation in Two Rivers Youth Sports Fund for the Parks and Recreation Department, you can do that even if you can't make the game that night as well. So something fun to look forward to for summer.
Thanks Mike. That's all I have.
And if I may ask, typically the Wine and Beer Walk, they had ticket sales in advance. Do you know where they're not there selling tickets in advance so they have an idea how many people are participating?
I don't know that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I'll check up with that. the Timber Rattlers baseball game. So we will get special coverage, special advertising for Explore Two Rivers and the city at the baseball game. We're also doing a fundraiser. So there's a link and we're going to publish it all over social media and our newsletters very soon. Then if you go through the link and you sign up to go to that baseball game, $3 of that ticket sale will come back to Two Rivers Youth Sports Fund. So we'll be able to put that into youth sports activities for the Parks and Recreation Department. Get a couple other perks about it as well. If you attend the game as a part of our group, then you can join us on the field for a parade around the warning track. Greg is out and so that means I get to throw out the first pitch. So you could see me hopefully make it across home plate. Also, our youth baseball and softball. Attend, they will get to be on the field for a high funnel with the players as well. So, and it's also Star Wars Night and fireworks after the game. So yeah, if you're looking for something fun, a night out at the ballpark, us out. If not, we're going to also be publishing QR code in the link. If you'd like to make a donation in Two Rivers Youth Sports Fund for the Parks and Recreation Department, you can do that even if you can't make the game that night as well. So something fun to look forward to for summer.
Thanks, Mike. That's all I have.
And if I may ask, typically the Wine and Beer Walk, they had ticket sales in advance. Do you know where they're not? They're selling tickets in advance. They have an idea how many people are participating?
I don't know that. I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, I'll check up with that. Maybe we can put that on the city website to community. So they're aware of it then.
Legislative intergovernment update. Amanda, I believe, is going to talk about some changes to the special Class B licenses.
So in 2023, Governor Evers signed Wisconsin Act 73, resulting in a significant alcohol beverage law change. The act took effect on May 1st of 2024, so last week. With this change, a division of alcohol beverages was created. So alcohol was divided from the tobacco enforcement. And there are some changes that affect the city of Two Rivers. So first, all Class C wine licenses no longer have to be a restaurant. Currently, the city does not have any of these licenses issued. All the forms have been updated. The city can only accept the new forms. All the businesses that currently have a license were mailed the new forms last month. The biggest change is for our temporary Class B holders for our events. These are the organizations that take out the licenses to sell beer at our events. There's new forms that they have to fill out. And with the forms, there must be an individual, individual questionnaire filled out for every member listed on that organization. The organization must also appoint an agent, which is the person in charge of the alcohol sales at the event. And that person must also take the alcohol beverage server course that's offered online through the Department of Revenue. And as, as always, they still have to have a licensed bartender or agent on the premise at all times. There are packets available for pickup for these organizations, along with a checklist explaining what needs to be filled out. And as always, if they have any questions, they can contact the city clerk's office at 793-5526.
Awesome. Thank you both. Thank you, department heads for chipping in and helping Ben out. Appreciate it. Nice job, Ben. Moving on to number nine, Consent Agenda. Letter A, Presentation of Minutes. There are four from past city council meetings. The recommended action is motion to waive reading, adopt the minutes. B, Final Financial Statement for Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, Contract Number ISR-FY22-53245, Idle Sites Grant to Assist with Renovation of Former Paragon Property. Recommended action is a motion to receive and file. For C, we have applications and petitions. We have a temporary Class B retailer's license for friends of Two Rivers Snowfest, Snowfest Wine and Beer Walk on Friday, May 10th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 8:30 PM in downtown Two Rivers. The recommended action for that is motion to approve the application and authorize assurance of the license. And for D, we have recommendation, recommendation from the Plan Commission Meeting of April 8th, 2024, is to set a public hearing regarding a proposed change in zoning from I2 Business District to B1 Business District for 20, for 2004 to 2006 14th Street. The recommended action is a motion to set the public hearing on May 20th, 2024 at 6 o'clock PM. The recommended action for the consent agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Mark. Second by Bill. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for that. On to number 10, City Council Formal Items. For A, we have Proclamation of National Drinking Water Week, May 5th through the 11th, 2024. The recommended, recommended action is motion to read and adopt the proclamation. And Andrew's on his way right now to read that resolution.
Proclamation naming the week of May 5th through the 11th, 2024 as National Drinking Water Week. Whereas water follows a natural cycle from earth to air to earth again. And whereas water is a basic and essential need of all living things. And whereas our health, comfort and standard of living depend upon an abundant supply of safe drinking water. And whereas we recognize the 50th anniversary of the Safe Water Drinking Act, which was established as the first national program to establish regulations and standards for all public water suppliers in the United States. And whereas the ever tightening standards of drinking water make better facilities and better trained personnel essential. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers hereby proclaims this week of May 5th through 11th, 2024 as National Drinking Water Week in the City of Two Rivers and urges all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the Two Rivers Water Department and the special efforts of the staff who work every day to enhance the well-being of the citizens of our community. I'd also like to take a minute to just thank WPPI for the promotional advertisement that they put together. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for this?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bonnie. And Adam, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. This is A, all in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. On to B, Proclamation naming the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024 as Police Week and May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day. The recommended action is motion to read and adopt the proclamation. Ben?
Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Two Rivers Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the city of Two Rivers. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Two Rivers Police Department unceasingly provide vital public service. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Two Rivers calls upon all citizens and upon all patriotic, civil and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through May 18th, 2024 as Police Week. And be it further resolved that the City Council further calls upon all citizens of Two Rivers to observe May 15th, 2024 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
Thank you for that. Looking for a motion to adopt the proclamation. Motion made by Adam, second by Bill. Any discussion? Seeing none. This is all in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. On to C, Resolution Naming, May 11th, 2024 as International Migratory Bird Day. The recommended action is B to motion to read and adopt the resolution.
All right. Some of you might have noticed the pelicans are back out here on Lake Michigan. That's awesome. It is migratory bird season for sure. So our migratory season is really going to start picking up. And I saw cardinals in my front yard the other day. We are a bird city, USA. So this is a fun thing for us to be able to brag about, about the great natural amenities we have in the city. All right. Whereas migratory birds are some of the most beautiful and easily observed wildlife that share our communities. And whereas many citizens recognize and welcome migratory songbirds as symbolic harbingers of spring. And whereas these migrant species also play an important economic role in our community, controlling insect pests and generating millions in recreational dollars statewide. And whereas migratory birds and their habitats are declining throughout the Americas, facing a growing number of threats on their migration routes into both their summer and winter homes. And whereas public awareness and concern are crucial components of migratory bird conservation. And whereas citizens enthusiastic about birds, informed about the threats they face and empowered to help address those threats can directly contribute to maintaining healthy bird populations. And whereas since 1993, International Migratory Bird Day, also known as IMBD, has become a primary vehicle for focusing public attention on the nearly 350 species that travel between nesting habitats in our communities and throughout North America and their wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean and the Southern US. And whereas hundreds of thousands of people will observe IMBD gathering in town squares, community centers, schools, parks, nature centers and wildlife refuges to learn about birds, take action to conserve them and simply to have fun. And whereas while IMBD officially is held each year on the second Saturday in May, its observance is not unlimited to a single day. And planners are encouraged to schedule activities on the dates best suited to the presence of both migrants and celebrants. And whereas IMBD is not only a day to foster appreciation for wild birds and to celebrate and support migratory bird conservation, but also a call to action. Here we go.
Mike? There's more in the back.
I missed the back one. I wondered why they didn't comment. That's great. And here we go again. Now, therefore, be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Two Rivers, does name May 11th, 2024 as International Migratory Bird Day in the City of Two Rivers in the County of Manitowoc. And we urge all residents, citizens to celebrate this observance and to support efforts to protect and conserve migratory birds and their habitats in our community and the world at large. There we go.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to adopt the resolution. Motion made by Doug, second by Mark. Any discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brandt?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that. On to D, Ordinance to Amend 2006-5-7 of the municipal code, code entitled Restrictions on Keeping Dogs, Cats and Other Animals to Address Certain Restricted Species. The recommended action will be to motion to waive reading, adopt the ordinance as requested by the police department. Ben?
Yeah, so just some background. This came before council back in February, I believe, prior to our large incident. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend to explain some of this. Captain Raich was kind of thrown out in front of you with, with not a whole lot of answers. But there were some decent concerns brought up as well. So I addressed those. I will admit that I didn't have a lot to do with the original writing of the ordinance. So I did make some adjustments, both based on your concerns and then other things that I thought needed to be corrected. So since that meeting, I did speak with the city attorney. He had spoken also at that council meeting, explaining that there are really minimal laws regarding animals statewide. And furthermore, many jurisdictions, including Madison, Green Bay, Appleton, Wausau, Manitowoc, that's where we got most of the language for, or similar language for this ordinance. There was also, I believe, council member Petrie had brought up, you know, there was some confusion about domestic cats and dogs, for instance. And I also noticed that ferrets were also included in there. So that confusing language. And then also, some, something was brought up with fur-bearing animals at that meeting with councilman or council member Leclerc at the time. I'm not, no, actually not Leclerc, Coach. So that was regarding fur-bearing animals. And it was really just a repeat of, of information in that. So I did add classes to better describe. I'm not even going to try to pronounce some of those as you can read them, but I did leave the examples that coordinate with them. So it'd be things like giraffes and deer, armadillos and sloths, rhinoceroses, elephants, those kind of things. Not likely that they'd come here, but you'd also not want to have them here. And then the part that I didn't like in that last ordinance was the chief of police or designee giving permission to have one of those animals. I thought was ridiculous when nearly all of our other ordinances, it could be something where I could deem something, an animal that's prohibited, but then that would have to go to council for an ultimate process and analysis and process. So I think just like with everything else, I should make that, that, that determination based on our ordinance, but then any appeals should go through the council, just like all our other ordinances to be consistent.
Thank you for that. Let's see. Look for a motion to waive reading, adopt the ordinance as requested by the police department. Do I have a motion for that? Thank. Bill, do I have a second?
I'll get the motion.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion?
Is, I guess I was wondering, according to what I thought I read, this came about because there is a problem developing in the city of these kinds of animals coming in?
And some of them you've been known, you've known because it's come up at council. For instance, we had issues with goats that all of a sudden appeared at, at a residence in the city. Some other ones that you haven't heard of, most recently was probably a rattlesnake that we had to tend to that was in the city. So yeah, it has come up and it seems to be increasing.
Okay. Well, I, I'm surprised it hasn't done more. I know there used, I think there used to be a lion in Mishkot. Am I right? Have you heard of that?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Well, anyway.
You did? There was some, someplace had some exotic animals. Just exotic.
And I'm also, you know, I, I know this maybe isn't quite the same, but we do have a lot of stray cats. And the thing is, if you're going to get rid of these animals, could we do something about some of the other animals? Because I don't like the idea of running them over when they're in the street and stuff. And I see quite a few of them.
Yeah, I don't think it relates necessarily to this, this ordinance, but I would agree stray cats is an issue. That came up. If you remember, we talked about that when we signed the agreement with LHS. And that's one of their biggest concerns is the amount of money that that's costing basically that program. And really, the cities of Two Rivers and Manitowoc is, stray cats is ridiculous right now. I do know that LHS was looking at other means of maybe dealing with it and something that we could bring to the table in the future to really reduce it. But there's no real quick action that we can do with that, other than address it the way we are. Some of the other places in, in Wisconsin are actually spayed and neutered, you know, when you have a stray, but then released back out into the public, unfortunately. So they're still stray, but over time you get a reduction in those numbers.
Well, that's what they say, but I'm not sure if that's so true. But the thing is, even if you put them back out, nobody takes care of their mites or their fleas. They freeze to death. They get attacked by other animals, other dogs. I don't even understand that concept. I guess I'm not a cat lover.
I think it's really that balance of, of the money that you're spending and the enforcement that you can take. And unfortunately, that's the situation we're all in. But we may be the responsible animal people, not necessarily those ones that are letting them go stray.
Thank you.
Says excluding domestic cats, dogs, ferrets. Well, who decides what a domestic cat, dog or ferret is? What's the actual definition of it? Because...
Right. Well, so if you read through those, the categories on how they describe them. So sure, you could have something, let's say, let's take the lion example. So a lion is prohibited based on where it lists. But you're right, it could be domesticated. So that process really would be if we got a complaint, first of all, like we're not going into people's houses because we don't have that right. If we get a complaint of that and now we go and investigate it and ensures, heck, they do have a lion. One, it's probably going to startle us. Two, we're going to question, well, is it listed in the ordinance? And if it is, at that point, I may deem that a prohibited animal, but that's when it goes before you guys. And then at that point, we would hear from them, just like we did with goats or anything else, maybe even like the raptor situation, where they come in and they give their spiel. And it's probably something along the lines of, I've had this lion for 20 years. It's never caused any problems. It's been living in my basement. I bought it from a pet store, any number of examples. And you guys deem, well, this is a domesticated animal. I think that's, that's how the process would work.
Good. Anything else? Okay. Roll call, Amanda.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brandt?
Aye.
Tim Petrie? Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On to E. Ordinance Amendment to Municipal Code seven dash one dot twelve Rules Enabling the Parks and Recreation Director to Establish Park Rules That May Be Enforced as Violations of the Park Ordinance. Recommended action will be to motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Ben or Mike?
As I put in the, I guess I was more of the, the one developing an ordinance, and after the last work session, I added quite a bit of information in there with the, with the assistance of our city attorney. I think our vice president, Adam Mahusky, had brought up some concerns about having it. One, basically notice go out to city manager, all city council members and the police department, so that is placed in there. And then really some sort of, you know, approval by the council afterwards, so that you'd have the thirty days or, or so, thirty days thereafter to approve or disapprove the modification of those rules. I would only add that in that talk as well, we had mentioned, at least Greg had mentioned, you know, we have a lot of properties such as like the waysides. I had mentioned, you know, we, we came across a new beach not too, too long ago, where maybe that should also read city parks or any other city properties, including city events on those properties. So just adding that language for prop, city property to be included in there, and it would be the same process. So our Parks and Rec director would have the authorization to deem that, that temporary rule, post it, we can still enforce that, but then it would ultimately go before council to be approved or disproved for the, the long future. And I guess if you have any questions of the, the issues that we are having, definitely Mike can speak to that. I mentioned some of those in here where we've had new things come about. Like I said, a new beach came about, and instantly we had a bunch of issues that we couldn't really address. They weren't listed necessarily in any of our ordinances, but it was city property. We put up a new park. We didn't expect that people would be biking and stuff on the fake ice that we have out there. There was a couple other issues. Skateboards, inline skates on, on other properties. The new playground at Neshota Park became a haven for dogs to go and, and urinate on, and that's not exactly what we want with a brand new park. So there you have it.
Okay. Looking for a motion to waive reading and adopt the ordinance. Motion by Darla, second by?
Second.
Thank you, Bonnie. Any discussion? Yes, Adam.
What are the penalties? It just says there is a penalty, but what is that penalty?
Yeah, the penalties would fall underneath the bond schedule, which the municipal court would have to set. So it would be similar to any of the other violations that could occur in that park penalty.
So they'd be written a citation, is that correct?
If you had to go that far, yeah, that would be the bond thing. But typically what would happen is, just like anything else, you'd have maybe a warning, maybe a verbal warning, warning, and if it got to the point where you're having problems, you could write a citation.
The only thing with this is it just seems, I mean, because we have a process, and I see we're still somewhat getting back to the process of bringing it back before council. It, it, it kind of can look to the outside as being a dictatorship. Like, there's one person in power that, that can make the rules for all the parks, and that, that's a look that I don't really like. I don't really like the process of having a dictatorship. I think that that's why we have boards, we have committees, commissions, we have a city council. That is my thing with that whole thing. I mean, it's nice that it's still coming back. It's going to be put into our agendas and something that we can vote on to approve, disapprove, and/or modify. But what happens if a citation, let's say a citation was given, and then the ordinance gets modified?
Well, I think that'd be clear wrong. John said it would get dismissed. I mean, I don't see our city attorney prosecuting a case where there's no longer an ordinance, and it was only in place for a week. And I, I agree with you, and I think the language that you had brought up was correct. And I did the same thing with the, the prohibited animals, because I read that, and it makes all the sense that, you know, the power should remain on the city council, you know, for any rules. It shouldn't be put in my hands. It shouldn't be put in anybody else's hands. But I do see that we have the need for something temporary where we can act fast. We were having damage to, you know, a brand new park really quickly. It became a quick attraction for all kinds of damage to the, the ice, but that wasn't really the intent. So what do you do in that situation? It's not against the law for them to be out there, and they don't have the intent to damage it, but we clearly are seeing that it's getting damaged.
Anything else? Uh, roll call, Amanda.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Doug Brandt?
Aye.
Tim Petrie? Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Stackmuster?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner? Motion carries.
Q on to F, City Manager's Appointment to Citizen Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The recommended action will be to motion to approve their appointments and reappointments as recommended by the city manager. I don't know if you have anything on that, Ben, otherwise, we got the, the list of proposed appointments in our packets. If anyone has any questions. Otherwise, I will look for.
Are you going to go over those?
Yeah, we can.
So the public knows that we're actually voting on?
Yep. Uh, I'll take, do you want it, Ben, or should I do it?
You can go ahead.
Okay. So these are the City Managers' Proposed Appointments to Citizen Boards, Committees, and Commissions for twenty twenty-four. There are a couple for appointments requiring council approval, and that's what we're here for tonight. Tracy Coach is going to be part of the Business and Industrial Development Committee, which will be expiring May first of twenty twenty-seven. Tracy Coach will also be part of the Community Development Authority to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-five, that's due to a vacancy. David Calista will be part of the Business and Industrial Development Committee, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven, due to a vacancy, and David Calista, again, will be on the Community Development Authority to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-eight, due to a vacancy. So those are new appointments. There are a bunch of reappointments requiring council approval. See Daniel Cordy for Advisory Rec Board. Youth, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven, along with Brian Gallagher is the same. Jason Sharping also is a part of that. Randy Ammerman, Zoning Board of Appeals, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. Teresa Cronfrost for Business Improvement District Board, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven. Joanne Kuba, part of the Business Improvement District Board, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven. Jackie Ackerman, Committee on Aging, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven. Betty Bitner, Committee on Aging, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven. Joanne Youngerman, Committee on Aging, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven. Gregory Conan, Community Development Authority, this term is to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven. Keith Lyons, Community Development Authority, term to expire May first, twenty twenty-seven. Corinne Weiss, Environmental Advisory Board, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. Jake Glazer, Environmental Advisory Board, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. Catherine Gad, Library Board, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. Katie Stone, also Library Board, expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. Kristen Lee, Plan Commission, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. Kurt Andrews, Room Tax Commission, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-five. And Rick Carey, Room Tax Commission, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-five. Those are the reappointments. There's also some appointments to be filled. The following ones are vacant, so if you're interested, please reach out. We have the Youth Advisory Recreation Board, Youth. We have two of those where those terms expire May first, twenty twenty-five. We also have a position open for Business Industrial Development Committee, which will expire on May first, twenty twenty-seven. Plan Commission, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. Zoning Board of Appeals, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. We also have a zoning board of appeals, alternate number one, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-six. And vacant zoning board of appeals, alternate two, to a term expiring May first, twenty twenty-six. And then we have two for the Environmental Advisory Board, each expiring May first, twenty twenty-seven. So for those, if you or someone you know is interested, you can reach out to the city manager's office and volunteer for those. So what I'm looking for for this is a motion to approve the appointments and reappointments as recommended by the city manager. Thank you, Bill, second by?
Second to motion.
Thank you, Mark. Any discussion?
And I, I also would like to add, the vacant, apply to the city manager, or if you see a current position that's filled, and you're interested in it too, at a later date when their term expires, apply to the city manager too for future. I don't think it'd be.
Okay. We're just wondering, Mark, if you should abstain because your wife is on the committee of aging, so.
I asked the city council, and you were there, Jack, when we had the reelection approval. I asked the council, my wife's on the board, should I not be on the board? And there was a consensus of the council, and you were there, should have brought it up at the point then. I, because I've all through.
I don't think it would create any, any conflict in and of itself.
Citizens are concerned. Let us know, and we'll address it and have the concerned citizen take over on the board.
Any other discussion?
I don't think that's what they're discussing, Mark. They're, they're discussing if you should abstain from the vote.
Oh, 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 I thought you.
Nothing else, just, just whether or not you should abstain, which is your call anyway. But, yeah, I don't, I think you took it well.
I don't think the law requires that you abstain in these circumstances, because. Why? Director in benefit. You know? Parents of. Elect to abstain.
I'll vote for everyone else but Betty Bitner then.
Okay, so we will do a roll call vote. Amanda?
Doug Brandt?
Aye.
Tim Petrie?
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas?
Aye.
Scott Stackmuster?
Aye.
Adam Mahusky?
Aye.
Darla Leclerc?
Aye.
Mark Bitner?
Everyone, aye, except Betty for.
Bill Leclerc?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. On to G, Official Newspaper Declaration and Bid. The recommended action for this will be a motion to accept bid as submitted and declare the Herald Times Reporter as the official newspaper of the City of Two Rivers. Ben, you got this one there?
I don't have much to add, other than that the Herald Times Reporter remains one of our sole local newspapers, so I think that's why we're sticking with them.
I frankly think is antiquated and cumbersome, but it is still there, and it's hard for me to recommend that the city decline to appoint an official newspaper, because our is obligated to under the statute, so.
It's still obligated to be them?
Well, it, it would have.
Because I know we looked at Valders at one time, but wasn't there something about subscription?
Yes, there, there is. Uh, let's see. Paper must report news and publish regularly, at least once a week, for at least two of the five-year period prior to publication of a notice. The paper must have published regularly and continuously in the municipality and must have a bona fide paid circulation of at least half of its circulation, and must have a designated number. Yeah, I, that's my recollection, too.
I'm getting that news.
I think you also need to talk to legislators, because this is coming down from the state, isn't it, Jack?
It's a state requirement.
Yeah. Maybe we should talk about that. I'd vote for W O M T News. They're always here.
That's true.
There you go. Okay, so we are looking for a motion to accept the bid as submitted and declare the Herald Times Reporter as the official newspaper of the City of Two Rivers. I want to add my own commentary. So looking for a motion. Thank you, Bill, and second by Bonnie. This will be in all of favor. Indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. On to H, Resoluce, Resolution Authorizing Use of Budgeted Twenty Twenty-Four Public Works Capital Projects Funds, Updating Public Works Faster Fleet Management Software, Fiscal Year Ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The recommended action will be to motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution as recommended by the Public Works Committee May first, twenty twenty-four meeting, and Matt is already up at the podium for questions and information.
A little background, as I mentioned earlier this evening, we do have a surplus of funds in our Public Works Equipment Capital Fund due to not receiving the dump trucks in a timely manner. Regarding the Faster software, right now, it is on a Windows-based platform, and we've been using it for decades for fleet management, for asset management, for doing our billings and historic documentation of our fleet, and basically our work order system for billings and things of that nature. Since I've only been here a year and a half, a little over, it's my understanding that for several years, the Faster company has been reaching out to us to make a transition to their window or web-based platform. But it is a substantial cost to do so, and in the past, including last year, we said the Windows version is working fine. It's meeting our needs. We'll pass on making this upgrade. We just recently heard that in twenty twenty-five, they will no longer be supporting the Windows-based platform. And such, if anything happened as a change in operating system, a glitch in the existing programming, we would no longer have any support, and we could lose decades worth of data and information. Therefore, I don't want to say reluctantly, we need to make this change, but it would be in our best interest to make this change. And the original concept was to wait until budget twenty twenty-five, but noting that we do have this equipment surplus in that fund. We are basically looking at moving forward with the six-month migration period from the time we say go to ultimately being self-sufficient and moving our own data and everything on the web. The Windows version is based upon number of users. The web-based version is based upon the number of assets. So we can have unlimited users now, which is a good thing. So we're not fighting over who's going to be entering what data and when. And actually, I heard that other departments may be interested in possibly utilizing the, the software for asset management, work order systems, and things of that nature as well. So the resolution is basically confirming a lot of the data that I just presented. If you have questions, available to try and address. Yes, Sam?
So where did the money come from? Because aren't we still receiving those trucks?
We are receiving those trucks. When we budgeted in twenty twenty-three, it was presumed that the trucks were each going to cost three hundred thousand. um, it was, uh, presumed that the trucks were each going to cost three hundred thousand dollars each. So in twenty three and twenty four, we budgeted three hundred thousand. In fact, the trucks are a little over five hundred thousand combined. So we have a surplus there, and then we did use them, uh, to buy that, uh, salt brine sprayer and things of that nature. And then in past, um, uh, purchases, we've recognized some savings there as well, including, uh, in two thousand and twenty three, we were scheduled to replace a tracked skid steer. Um, rather than replacing it, we bought out the lease and saved ourselves about thirty thousand dollars there. So it's, I don't want to say nickel and diming, but we've built up a little bit of a reserve that has allowed us this opportunity.
And I will add, that's the notes that I had from Greg prior to this meeting too, is that it was roughly seventy K from a line item that they already had.
For a physical. It's the web?
It's just the web.
So.
At the mer- just similar to other web-based, will be at the mercy of their platform. Uh, it works off a, a regular PC computer, correct?
Bonnie, did you have a?
Yeah, well, it's kind of similar, um, to Adam's, cause I looked it up and it said three hundred thousand dollars in this fund that you said, five, three, three, zero, zero, and so forth. So is, I guess I thought that meant there was three hundred thousand in the fund, but there's more?
There, the fund balance is right around, and I'm doing this off the top of my head, around nine hundred thousand. But there's the proposed street sweeper for this year, there's the two dump trucks, uh, the initial payment, and then the final balance. So there's a little over a hundred thousand as a budget surplus in that fund.
Okay, does the street sweeper come in yet?
We have not received bids on that. It's out for bid right now.
Oh.
And that's estimated at about two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Can I ask you, Bill, why you voted no?
Uh, because of. Charging for.
I have a need, I guess, and if, if they're going to stop supporting the software.
I would add too, that the police department's dealing with the same thing. In fact, I was having a conversation with, um, the other council member, Leclerc, earlier today about my frustrations in that, um, we have tried, and I'm sure the other departments have for a long time, to steer clear of the cloud-based software, the internet-based software, um, because usually you can get better bang for your, your buck when you get your own server, you get your own storage, um, but really, we're kind of getting blackmailed into that's not even available and they're pushing us out of there. Um, so there's going to be future items that I have to come before council as well, um, because I have no other choice anymore. Um, I'm hoping, for instance, with our body cameras, to get maybe one more server out of it. Um, but probably whoever follows me is going to have to push for that cloud software, and it's not going to be cheap.
The questions from Matt. Yes, Darla.
We're just talking about, you know, this is web-based and not Windows-based, and we're at the mercy. We're at the mercy of a lot of stuff, the grid, I mean, the wifi, the, if it's unreliable or if there's the possibility that it's going to go down, or we're going to be twiddling our thumbs. Is there anything that we can do to back this stuff up so we're not? I mean, so much can go wrong, and then what do you do?
Um, at this time, I'm not aware of a backup solution. Um, I'm hoping they have some sort of backup plan, a, a backup cloud to their cloud, um, but I don't have that answer at this time.
And you do, would you just let us know?
Any other questions? Otherwise, from Matt. Yes, Adam.
Is there still in your budget, as discussed, that budget time for the flatwork across the street at, uh, Central Park three sixty-five?
Around the south side of the, uh, existing shelter, yes, hopefully yet this month.
Other questions for Matt? Otherwise, I will look for a motion to waive reading and adopt the resolution.
Amen.
Thank you, Bonnie. Do I have a second? Thank you, Doug. Any discussion amongst us? I know when we met at Public Works, um, we did talk quite a bit about, a while about this, and yeah, a lot of stuff goes to the web, that's where everything's going right now, so I wish I had stock in web development, but, um, unfortunately, a lot of places and a lot of companies are starting to go to web, and it's, it's going to hurt a lot of people, so. Other than that, uh, if there's no other discussion, roll call vote.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Stackmuster.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
No.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brandt.
Aye.
Tim Petrie. Motion carries.
Okay, and then, uh, on to number eleven, from information only. Uh, we have a city council regular meeting, Monday, May twentieth, at six o'clock PM, and a work session on Monday, May twenty seventh, also at six PM.
Council President, I would just ask that, um, May twenty seventh, you may want to reconsider, is that Memorial Day? So I don't know if you guys are looking to counsel, uh, cancel that, or move that, or whatever you prefer.
Oh, okay, Tuesday, the twenty eighth. Gotcha. Is that okay with everyone, doing a Tuesday?
I don't know if there's any conflicts.
It's the next day.
Hopefully, hopefully it should be okay.
If not, we can talk about the next regular meeting too. Uh, just check your calendars and make sure Tuesday's okay.
I'll do.
That's not allowed. I'm just kidding, sorry. Okay, uh, that's it. Number eleven, on to twelve, adjournment, looking for a motion for that. Motion by Tim, second by, and that, by Bill. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried, thank you, and good night.